I ask you to sit just a little here. You're right there.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of agenda for regular meeting. Under provisions of the public meeting law of the state of Missouri, the board must adopt by roll call vote, an agenda that includes the time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, June 8th, 2015, at the administration center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. I need a motion to accept the regular meeting agenda.
Move that we accept the regular meeting. Thank you.
Moved by Dr. Thurman, second by Dr. Graves. Ms. Hogshead, do you call the roll?
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Dr. Graves?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Secretary votes aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye. Adoption of agenda for closed meeting. Section 610.021 of Missouri law provides for discussion of certain agenda items in a closed meeting. Notice of the proposed closed meeting, including the agenda items to be discussed, was posted. The board, by roll call vote, must authorize holding the closed meeting and approve the proposed agenda by reference to each subject to be discussed. The agenda for the closed meeting is legal, section 610.021.1, and personnel, section Need a motion to accept closed meeting agenda.
Move that we accept the closed meeting agenda.
Second. Been moved by Dr. Thurman, second by Mr. Brown. Ms. Hogshead, do you call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Graves?
Aye.
Secretary votes aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Mr. Graves? Aye.
Motion.
All right, well, we've got a great crowd tonight. Thanks for everybody for coming. Got a lot of recognition tonight, so let's get started. Donna, you want to read those words?
Cross Keys students win at Technology Student Association. Jeremy Van Pelt is going to perform. Students in the newly formed Technology Student Association, TSA, at Cross Keys Middle Schools performed exceptionally well at the 2015 TSA Spring Distinction Conference in Raleigh, Missouri this spring. The students participated in several competitions at the conference, with seven students each receiving multiple awards. Student members of the CKMS TSA are Passion. Passion. Maria? How do you say the last name?
Barryer.
Barryer, okay. Josiah Gooden. Marvin Quarles. Grace Ryle. Billy Conner. Zachary Tinter. The president Josh Geisler. MVP Moses Woods. The club's advisor is Eric Brown.
I'd like Mr. Brown to read off the awards if he will.
Josh Geisler, president of the club this year, got second place in flight, medal finalist in tech bowl written, medal finalist in tech bowl oral, and medal finalist in leadership strategies. Passion Barryer. Second place in Go Green Manufacturing, medal finalist in prepared speech, medal finalist in tech bowl written. Josiah Gooden is not here this evening. Medal finalist in tech bowl written, medal finalist in problem solving. Marvin Quarles, who I don't see anywhere, second place in flight. Grace Rule, second place Go Green Manufacturing, medal finalist in essays on technology and leadership strategies. Emily Thompson, second place technical design, second place Go Green Manufacturing, medal finalist in problem solving. And Zachary Tinter, second place video game design, medal finalist essays on technology. And the last one is Moses Woods, who had second place on video game design and second place on essays on technology.
Very significant to this, it's the first year that they did this. They just took a flyer, said to do this competition. Mr. Brown raised $2,000 along with the group. They went down there and they gained all these awards. So that's amazing.
That day happened in a special place in my heart. I ran the TSA chapter at McClure North for several years. We always went to the state competition. I always had state winners. I ended up with five, I believe, national finalists in drafting, went to the competitions. And I was president of the state board of TSA. So I know all about TSA.
Good.
Wonderful, wonderful organization. The competitions are intense. There are kids from all over the state. Best and brightest come to this, and I'm glad that we did so well. Thank you very much. All proud.
Ferguson, Florissant School District teachers and schools receive Emerson Gold Star Grants. Jenna Shord is going to present. Oh, Dr. Biggs in their place. Two of four, first of all, good afternoon to our board and to our community. Two of four Emerson Gold Star Grants that had been awarded went to Ferguson, Florissant Schools and teachers. Mr. Ken Halsel, Phil, will you please come? Is recipient of a $2,500 grant to form a legal not-for-profit business owned and operated by McClure students with disabilities. The program, a catering business, teaches students business skills and prepares them for jobs in the food service industry. The not-for-profit will serve as a fundraising vehicle to acquire a commercial kitchen and continue to expand the business. McClure High School will receive $2,500 from Emerson. Thank you. Chris Reese.
I can stand up for her.
Matt Heinz, Speaker, Principal of Bermuda, will come forward. Chris Reese and team members at Bermuda Elementary School are recipients of a $10,000 grant to fund training for Miss Reese, the district elementary science instructional coach, in the Noel Engineering Program designed by Turf University Center for Engineering, Education, and Outreach. She will then train and mentor cohort of teachers. The grant will fund training, travel, material kits for initial training, material gift cards to purchase supplies for engineering, and trade books for cohort teachers. Bermuda Elementary will also receive a $5,000 grant from Emerson. Ferguson, Florissant School District Schools recognized for sustainability with Green Ribbon Awards. Eric Hattling.
Good evening. I'm Eric Hattling, the Science Coordinator, along with the Green Schools Committee Chair. This year, we have three schools that are very recognized for earning the Ferguson, Florissant School District Green Ribbon School Award. These schools have made large efforts towards raising awareness and sustainability. They completed an application. Students and teachers and principals are engaged in the whole process. They work towards increasing recycling efforts, reducing solid waste. They also work at reducing energy usage by awareness and by collecting data each month and displaying those charts throughout the school. They reduce erosion around the school by planting trees and other plants. And they maintain or have started a school garden. So I would like to recognize this year, the three schools that won, that earned the award. For the first time, Griffith Elementary School. And then we have two schools. There's two schools that this is their second year. We have Parker Road Elementary. And Cross Keys Middle School. While they're getting their picture taken.
You want to put the flag in there?
This flag is an ecology flag. It's the first ecology flag in 1970. And I'll explain a little bit about it. It has an E in the middle for ecology and an O for organism. And the green stands for the green light and the white stands for the pure air and water. Each school gets this the first year that they have the award. So if you see it, you'll kind of understand what that's like.
Ferguson, Florissant School District. High schools bring home big wins from the state track competitions, championships. Dr. Davis. Will the coaches and track and field team for McClure please come forward? Track teams from all three Ferguson High Schools brought home big wins from the track and field state championship held Saturday, May 30th, at the D Y T Reed Stadium on the campus of Lincoln University. With first-year head coach Tim Levine- McClure, swept all three Class IV relay titles, winning the 400-meter relay, the 800-meter relay, and the 1,600-meter relay. The Comets entered the meet as favorites to win the relay titles and delivered, winning the 400 relay in 42.41 seconds and setting a new record for the school. Boys strong, Henry, I'm sorry, Malik, boys strong, Henry Jones, Raquem Stallings, and Kevin Spralling, Sprappings. The Comets won 800 relay in 1.26 seconds. Asia McFadden, Kevin Spraggins, Henry Jones, and Raquan Spelling. McClure also won the 1,600 relay in 3.20 seconds. Asia McFadden, Chris Murray, Karan Martin, and Joshua Haskin. Their victories propelled McClure to a third-place boys, Class 14, finish with 51 points. McClure also had a victorious individual that excelled at the state championship. That student is Asia McFadden, finished fourth, and Karan Martin finished fifth in the 400. Kevin Spraggins finished third, and Henry Jones finished sixth in the 200. And Demetrius Thomas finished sixth in the shorts, shot put, I'm sorry. Maia Jenkins finished sixth in the triple jump, and Joanna Adams placed eighth in the 100. Thank you to our students and coaches. Well, each student that, I think, identify yourselves, students. Can you each identify yourselves?
Can't they come up?
Yes.
We need all of them.
Where's the team?
Okay, give us your names. MSB Coach and Students, please come forward. Coaches and students. With Athletic Director Keith Rhodes, Coach Martine Scott, and Coach Tommy Darney, the McClure South Berkeley Boys won the Class III championship with 65 points, the first title for MSB since 2010. The seven-member team, Bulldogs team, got championship performances from seniors Michael Miller in the 400-meter and Javon Clark in the 110-meter hurdles. Tyra's current was right behind Clark in second place in the 110-meter race. Clark also finished second in the 300-meter hurdle, and Miller placed fourth in the 200-meter race. The girls' team took second place, falling short by one and a half points with Kamara Franklin taking first place in four events. The 100-meter dash, the 200-meter dash, the 400-meter dash, and the 4x400-meter relay. And Shay Curtis, Maisha Robinson, Taylor Fox, and Tiffany Blakely joining her with a 400, 4x400-meter relay victory.
Mr. Morris, could you get somewhere where we can see? There you go. All right, everybody look over here real quick. Thank you.
Well, McClure North, coaches, assistant coaches, and student team members, please come forward. Assistant Principal, Ms. Harris. With Coach Sheldon Webster and assistant coaches, Dave Asher, Andrew Reseding, Alexis Eldridge, and Renee, Sky Kane, McClure North. I think we're getting organized. McClure North scored 62 points to win the Class V championship, state championship. The Stars. The Stars won the Class IV title last year for the first time in school history, making this a back-to-back win for the Stars. Senior Sprinter and hurdler Jasmine Barge was state champion.
Raise their hands when you call their names, so we'll know who they are.
Oh, we can't see back here. Jasmine's fifth and sixth such title. Winning the 100 and 300-meter hurdles, finishing second in the 200, and helping the 1,600-meter relay to win third-place finish. Senior Demetria Anderson. The second in the 100, then sixth in the 300s as well. Ronnie Legs on the second place 4x200 and third place in the 4x400 relays. Sophomore Cindy Rogers. Was tied in the 400 and ran legs on the 400x200 and 4x400 relays. Kiana Harvey. And Deja Williams ran legs on the second place 4x100 and sixth place 4x200 relays. Jayla Regans ran the 4x100 and placed ninth in the long jump. Tekeah Thompson ran the 400 meter and ran legs on the 4x200 and 4x400. Faith Hudson was a part of all three relay races. Finally, McClure North, Harry Ballard. Won the Class V state championship in the long jump with a leap of 22 feet, one and a half inches.
Coaches, get where you can see me, so I, there you go. Mr. Morris, I can't see you. Thank you.
Soon as those scroll downs through all these pages of awards from track, track, we'll get going again. That was a great year at Jeff City this year for our teams. Let's give another round of applause. This portion of the meeting is allocated for the board to provide an update of current activities and events the district may be of special interest to board members and the community. Mr. Eber is on vacation, so we'll start with Mr. Brown.
Well, I'm assigned to give the Stakeholder and Community Engagement Report, which I shall. And in this particular case, we've got several events that have taken place. We had an Oasis volunteer, the Volunteers for the Oasis Program, had a annual luncheon where there were some awards given, where they were these individuals who volunteer, they're generally over 50 years old. They volunteer to help our young children's reading skills and self-esteem and positive attitudes about learning. Several of these tutors received a special recognition at the luncheon after having completed five, 10, 15, and up to 20 years of service. That's remarkable, and we're very grateful to them. Now, we also had Central Elementary School's 135th anniversary, which was terrific. And they have been serving the Ferguson area for 135 years. Again, a tremendous accomplishment, and I love going into that school. It's just straight from antiquity. It's lovely. And since I have a home that was built in 1893, I enjoy going there. Now, we have a couple of events that are coming up. The district planning, is planning to host the Boeing-sponsored STEM events for our youth. That will be on a Saturday, a mini-day camp at McClure South Berkeley. That's June 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And it will be for children of the ages of eight through 12 years old. More information will be coming to the, from the district to the families. And so, please keep an eye out for that. That sounds like very exciting. Then we also have a back-to-school fair and unity celebration planned, and the planning itself is underway. It's going to take place on August 1st, and I'm not sure where it's actually going to take place. Does anybody know? I'm sorry? Oh, okay, on the ground here, okay. It's our purpose to showcase our students, staff, and community partners. This celebration will focus on positive developments of the past year and our hope for the future. We want to engage our stakeholders in a way that unites us. It is our intention to focus on our common goals. The event will focus on our students and families. We will provide useful information for each of our, and that will come from each of our schools, as well as providing helpful resources to our students to start the new year off. We want them to do that and get off on the right foot, and that's one of our ways of helping them. There will be immunizations, visions, screenings, haircuts, school enrollment, and registration services, and much more. There'll be a large main stage featuring student performances, outdoor games, and refreshments. And on the main stage, we will hold a presentation to announce our district's initiatives for the 2015 and 2016, the 2015 and '16 year. Dr. Davis has put this together. We're very excited, and it's his intent and our intent to start this next school year off with a very positive approach, and we can just grow on that. And that is the report of the day.
All right, Dr. Graves.
For me, I had the pleasure of attending Cross Keys Middle School Junior National Honor Society, where we had several students who were inducted into the National Honor Society. And for me, as I prepare for the new school year, I am just working on getting my board requirements. So I have training in July, and I get to go to Tantara for training this weekend for leadership training. So I'm getting ready for the new school year, and I'm excited.
All right, Mr. Spoh is on vacation as well, so we'll go to Ms. Hogshead.
Okay, I'm on the talent portion of the strategic plan. We've had many new hires. I just want to showcase one of them, who is a second-grade teacher at Lee Hamilton. And I've noticed that she was in second grade, she was in my youth group, and I taught her in Sunday School in the fourth grade. She's been gone through Parker Road, and Cross Keys, and McClure North. So it's nice that our hometown students are coming back and teaching for us. So I'm excited about that, and I think that the school district will be very lucky to have her. I would also like to thank Dr. Davis for all that he's done on these new hires. He's come back for the administrative roles and really picked out some talented people. And I'm excited for the new people that are coming into the district after going through a good year next year. But, the most important thing that I want to say is that I would like to thank Larry for all the service he's given us the last year and a half as superintendent. And I just want to say that you've done an awesome job under all the circumstances. And I'm sure you're glad you're going back to your other role as assistant to the superintendent, but we're glad that you were the superintendent. So thank you very much. That was the talent report. This is a very talented man, and we're very lucky to have him.
Dr. Thurman.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to echo that. As a new board member coming in, Larry LaRue was my superintendent, and I will tell you that he helped me so much as a first-year board member. So I want to say thank you for your hard work and all the things that you've done. I've had many opportunities to visit a couple of schools and also to do some personal things that are happening in the community. Number one, I attended a career day at Airport Elementary School. They have a new program called Projects Succeed, and it stands for Seeking University Careers, Career Connections to Expand Educational Discoveries. And really, all it is, is partnering with the universities, Washington University, UMSO, and Harris. And they're having them come in and do workshops with their children. And the other thing that they did, they had a huge career day, and they had over 60 people come in and share their careers with the children. It was so exciting to see how the children went from room to room and talking to different people about the different programs or different jobs that they had. And I had the opportunity to speak as a board member and also as a counselor, because that was my career, and principal as well. The counselor started this, Sharon Paulit Selvi, and also- some of my students, because I was principal for fifteen years in this district, to see them graduate. But then to be invited to their homes and to their parties as they graduate is such an honor. So I had an opportunity to do that for several of my students. So I've been a little bit busy, and I'm enjoying it. I really am. Thank you.
There you go. I'm glad your back is feeling better and you're able to get out to these events.
Yes.
So that's good news also. So, yes, we've had graduation, we've had retirement dinner with lots of people retiring from the district. It has been a busy month. My duties are in the facilities portion, and as you'll see tonight, we're gonna go forward with lots of projects. We passed Prop I, and we're gonna start selling bonds, and we're gonna start doing things with that money. And I appreciate the support the community has given us to allow us to do this. Very good. Mr. LaRue, I don't know what to say. I asked you to take this job on a year and a half ago. I knew you were the right guy for the job. You have done what we needed to, when we needed to, and put your heart and soul into the last year and a half. I really, really appreciate all that you've done. So, your turn. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Laurie. Samuel.
I really don't have anything to share at this time, except my desire to work for the board, and I look forward to it this year. And if I can give any assistance with information or anything, please let me know.
All right, now, Larry LaRue, asking you for a minute.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Couple of things that I'd really like to acknowledge, and that is the people that we work with in the district at all levels, in all capacities. We've been tested, and we've got great folks, and we've had a lot of support from people in the community, and it's appreciated. And we know we have further to go, but there's no question that whether it's through the FFNEA or problem-solving, our board members' problem-solving, our administrators, cabinet members, to again try to do the best that we can. Sometimes there is a name called up here, and people stand up, but it needs to be understood that those folks are out here, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be able to work with them, because they're very, very good, and I think that if you knew them on faces like I do, that you would be very proud of the people that you employ. So, thank you, and... Then there's Margie.[814.63][814.63](laughter) And I don't mean, that was not meant to minimize, it was just to magnify, and couldn't have a better friend. So, thank you.[829.13][829.13](applause).
I was talking the other day about all my bosses, and Margie, you were one of them. Everybody keeps me in line, so anyhow, well, we do have a guest, not a guest in the house. He's gonna own the house here pretty soon, and that'll be Dr. Davis. So, give him a minute to kind of give you an update. Next time that we meet, he will sit next to me, so I look forward to the...
Larry has made it, he's set a ton of orders, so got some big shoes to fill. But I am excited, I'm really excited about July one getting here. And I just, you know, this staff has been amazing, and I've not started yet, I've been there probably twenty-five times it seems like, but everybody has made it so easy. The staff at the school, I've been to every school except Mark Twain, and I'm gonna say that publicly, because I'm gonna make sure that Mark Twain is on a high priority, because we want to make sure that we give all of our students attention. But I've been to every school before school closed, have met so many people, and remember a lot of names. Some names I forget, but I remember a lot of names, and I really appreciate coming to this community, now my community, and living here. I'm so looking forward to it. And you know, when I talk to people all around the country, especially back in North Carolina, they know I'm coming to Ferguson. Every time I say it, I say it with even more excitement. And people say, "Okay, yeah, good, great."[934.13][934.13](laughter). But I mean it, though, because I've been here, and I know what's here, and this is a great community. So give yourselves a round of applause.[943.13][943.13](applause). And I can tell you that, you know, I do things a hundred percent. I put both feet in, and we go to work, because it's about children. And I'm very excited to be the next superintendent of Ferguson-Florissant, because I expect us to be the very best, and it takes great people making that happen, making it happen. So I'm looking forward to working with everyone. I'm trying to transition, so my wife and my son are still in North Carolina right now, and we close school tomorrow and Friday. We have a couple of schools that had to close differently because of the snow, you know, in the Southland snows. You get a dusting of snow, all the milk and bread is gone in the grocery store, so, yeah. But we actually closed school this week, and I will be living in Ferguson, so make the announcement.[991.32][991.32](applause). And my son will be going to Ferguson-Florissant School District. So my child will be here, because I believe in public education. I'm a product of it, and I wouldn't have anything else but that. And so, I'm even more excited to bring on more talent. I think that's what's important. I said this when I was announced on February eleventh, that principals are critical to this work, and teachers are critical to this work. If we have great principals who understand what needs to happen every day in schools and classrooms, and give teachers support they need to make that happen, we will be the best. And I see my job as someone who supports everyone, but especially the principals, so they can make sure we take care of our teachers and our students. So I'm really excited about the administrators that we're bringing on board for the fifteen, sixteen school year. And so, I want to introduce them and bring them forward. So I will say a little bit about each one of them, and as I do, I'll call your name, and if you just come forward, if you have someone with you, I'll give you an opportunity to introduce that person, or two, or three, or how many you have with you. First, we will bring to the stage Mr. Courtney Ford. Give him a round of applause as he comes.[1068.13][1068.13](applause). Mr. Ford has been named the Assistant Principal of McClure High School. Mr. Ford had previously served as an interim Assistant Principal at McClure, and has also taught sixth grade at Johnson-Wabash Elementary School. Mr. Ford has a Bachelor of Science degree in education from the University of Central Missouri, and a Master's of Arts in Education from Lindenwood University. In addition, he is K-12 certified in administration, and Mr. Ford has expertise in the areas of PBIS, Teach Like a Champion, and data analysis. And he is also a new father.[1108.51][1108.51](applause). Anyone want to come with you? I'm sure Mom and Baby are home, so we're excited to have him on board and looking forward to his work at McClure. Next, I'd like to bring up Ms. Jocelyn Q. Walker. Give her a round of applause as she...[1131.13][1131.13](applause). Ms. Walker has been named our new federal program administrator. In this role, she will oversee budgeting, auditing, evaluation, reporting, and compliance for the district's federal and state titled programs. Ms. Walker previously served as Director of State and Federal Programs at the Riverview Gardens School District. Prior to serving as an administrator, Ms. Q. Walker served as an instructional facilitator and teacher. She holds a Master's Degree in Educational Administration from Lindenwood University, a Master's Degree in Elementary Ed, and a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary in Education from the University of Missouri at St. Louis. And I'm learning how to say "umsul."[1178.13][1178.13](laughter). So give her another round of applause.[1181.13][1181.13](applause). And I said to the board, when I brought these names forward, that each one of these people that I'm bringing forward are rock stars. So they are gonna knock it out of the park. That's my expectation, and I'm looking forward to it. My next, did you bring anyone with you that you wanted?
I did.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Christopher Cusnerick. Mr. Cusnerick, please come forward.[1208.13][1208.13](applause). Mr. Cusnerick has been named the new AD, Athletic Director at McClure North High School. Mr. Cusnerick previously served as an administrator and athletic director in the Collinville High School, and most recently served as a social studies teacher at Collinville High School. He brings to McClure North eight years of AD experience, four years as an assistant AD, and four years as an AD. Mr. Cusnerick holds a Bachelor's Degree in History, Teacher Education from Illinois State University, and a Master's Degree in Ed Administration from Western Illinois University. So please welcome Mr. Christopher Cusnerick.[1255.41][1255.41](applause).
Yes, I did. I brought my better half, my wife, and then this here with me tonight.
Absolutely. Give her a round of applause.[1268.13][1268.13](applause). Please stand, yes.[1271.13][1271.13](laughter). So Chris, did I say, sorry, actually, you like to say the last name for me. Is it Cusnerick or Cusnerick?
Cusnerick.
Cusnerick, thank you, thank you. I like to make sure I get people's names correct. Cusnerick, thank you so much for that. Next, I'd like to bring up Dr. Lisa Hazel. Give her a round of applause.[1294.13][1294.13](applause). We have some talented people. Dr. Hazel has been selected as an additional, we have another position, as Executive Director of Elementary Education. In this role, Dr. Hazel will join Dr. Land to oversee curriculum and instruction in the district's seventeen elementary schools. Dr. Hazel previously served for eleven years as the principal of Hall's Ferry Elementary School, and did an amazing job. Prior to serving as an administrator, she served Hall's Ferry as an instructional specialist and as a fourth-grade teacher. Dr. Hazel holds a doctorate in Educational Leadership from Maryville University, a Master's Degree in Special Education, and a Bachelor's Degree in Psychology from Truman State University. So, welcome to the team, Dr. Hazel.[1354.13][1354.13](applause).
I did.
Okay, please.
I brought my two sons, Dylan and Logan.
Dan, Dylan, and Logan.
And my brother-in-law in December in Kansas. And then my husband, Sean Hazel, who is also an educator.
Awesome.
He works for Jenny's School District.
Awesome.[1367.13][1367.13](applause). And then we have Mr. Andrew Crowley. Mr. Crowley, please give him a round of applause.[1374.13][1374.13](applause). Mr. Crowley has been named as the next principal of McClure North High School. Mr. Crowley previously served as a building principal at Lindenburg High School in St. Louis, and St. Helens High School in Oregon. He brings to McClure North five years of building principal experience and six years as an assistant principal. Prior to serving as an administrator, Mr. Crowley was a business marketing teacher for nine years. Mr. Crowley holds a Bachelor's Degree in Business Education from East Carolina University, and that is one of my alma maters.
Oh.
And he also has a Master's Degree in Human Resource Development, Educational Leadership from Towson University in Maryland. He is in the process of completing his doctorate in Educational Administration from Maryville University. So please give another round of applause to Mr. Anthony Cusnerick.[1428.13][1428.13](applause).
To the new employees, I would just like to say that we have heard awesome things about you, and we did hear that you're rock stars, and we were all excited to vote for you and bring you into our district. We're excited about what you're going to be able to do this next year.
Yes, yes.[1447.13][1447.13](applause).
All right. Public comments. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and a topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board or request to speak from the podium identify themselves, and in keeping with District Policy forty-fifty-one, forty, and forty-fifty-nine, and personnel law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to the speakers during the public comment period, the board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind those who wish to make public comments during tonight's board meeting that there is a three-minute time limit. In the interest of fairness to all who wish to address the board and adherents to board policy, we must limit speakers to three minutes, and this will help the remaining speakers with their limitations using signs indicating that there is one minute and thirty seconds remaining in the comment period, and when the speaker's time is up. We ask that everyone, for everyone's cooperation to help us make our meetings efficient and respectful, when everyone's time is possible. Thank you. Mr. Trader.
Well, I wasn't so sure. I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, but Dr. Davis kind of, where'd he go? I'm so old, I remember when Florissant was the top. Everybody wanted to be a teacher at Florissant. Everybody wanted to move to Florissant, so you got a thing to fill. And I'm glad to see the positive attitudes that Leslie and Brown put on, and whatever, and I think it is positive. I'm just saying things that I hear outside and what I learn here. And your presentation tonight was wonderful with all the activity that you're doing. I'm very impressed with all of you. But, now, if I was a teacher, I would be on this positive side that this...
Yes, yes.
Board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and a topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board or request to speak from the podium identify themselves, and in keeping with District Policy 4051, 40, and 4059, and personnel law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to the speakers during the public comment period, the Board President may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind those who wish to make public comments during tonight's board meeting that there is a three-minute time limit. In the interest of fairness to all who wish to address the board and adherents to board policy, we must limit speakers to three minutes. And this will help the remaining speakers with their limitations using signs indicating that there is one minute and 30 seconds remaining in the comment period when the speaker's time is up. We ask that everyone, for everyone's cooperation, to help us make our meetings efficient and respectful where everyone's time is possible. Thank you.
Well, I wasn't so sure I was going to say anything tonight, but Dr. Davis kind of, where'd he go? I'm so old, I remember when Florson was the top. Everybody wanted to be a teacher at Florson. Everybody wanted to move to Florson. So you've got a thing to fill, and I'm glad to see the positive attitudes that Leslie and Brown put on, and whatever, and I think it is positive. I'm just saying things that I hear outside and what I learn here. And your presentation tonight was wonderful with all the activity that you're doing. I'm very impressed with all of you. But, now, if I was a teacher, I would be on this positive side that this is the year that's got to turn. Okay? But the thing is, you have to say positive things. You have to watch what you say all the time. There was two teachers up here, one was great before, and the other one, she mentioned anti-bullying, anti-bullying. She mentioned it about 12 times. She even had a club anti-bullying, which is absolutely wrong because you're saying the wrong words. You're not supposed to use the bad words of bullying or that, just eliminate that. Because even if you're saying anti, you're saying bullying. And that's why anti-drugs, all the money that they spent on it, doesn't work because they're using the wrong words. Let me tell you how important words are to the three minutes. I had Auntie who's 90 years old, and all of a sudden, she was in a senior resident's place, and they come to my sister-in-law and says, "We're having trouble with your aunt. She won't take a bath, she won't take a shower." And my right sister-in-law says, "So what are you saying to her?" "Well, we just asked her if she wants to take a shower." She said, "No, you're saying the wrong words. You had to say, 'It's time to take a shower.'" And so she took a shower all the time because they said the right words. That's how important it is. That's a true story. Another true story. The boy across the street was slow, and the mother said, "If I'm not in the house, you don't let anybody in." Well, one day, she locked herself out. She didn't get in. Okay, I have one more story that's true, and I have to tell it. This is about a third cousin down the road. So he was a little kid, and he would go out the street, and he would always come back at a certain time. Well, he comes back all wet. The next day, he comes back all wet. Mother said, "If you come back one more time with those wet clothes on, you're going to get it." Yep. The next day, he came back stark naked with the clothes over his arms. So you really have to be careful of what you say.
Thank you.
So when I, yeah, when I, if I was a teacher, the first thing that I would do, bringing in a new class, would tell them that we're going to be the best. I told Dr. Davis that we were going to be the best grade in the county, and I would unite my students right away.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Schrader.
Hi, I'm Paul Schrader. Do you know me, I think? Couple of things. I think the first one is, I really would like to see the board decide to meet and retreat. We did this in years past, where it's been an entire day, especially with Dr. Davis coming on board. It's really important that everybody get a good chance to, in detail, talk about what we want to accomplish in the 15, 16 school year. I know we're operating under a five-year strategic plan umbrella, but we really need to be as specific as possible, and I think that would help everybody really get themselves on the right track. That's just me to you, okay? The other thing is that I attended the Normandy School's collaborative public hearing in April, where the superintendent shared some most interesting data. Since it's our neighboring school district, we should be thinking about what they're doing. The first interesting data was that they replaced almost half of their staff. And the phrase that was most interesting, they found teachers that were more inexperienced, which means is they're going for cheap, and they had to spend this year cutting to the bone. And if you read the newspaper a few weeks back about the senior, no AP classes and so forth, that's what happens when you cut to the bone. If you get more inexperienced teachers, you don't add people that are qualified to teach AP courses. It doesn't happen. So that was one interesting thing. That's just an amazing concept to replace half your staff. The other was, is that they got through this past year basically by selling $2.5 million worth of schools. That's pretty much what got them through. So they're still very precarious financially, which brings me to my point. Normandy was also on the State Board of Agenda, Agenda Meeting in May, and I was up there and talked briefly with the Commissioner, Margie Van Diven, between sessions, and I asked her, it was point-blank, what happens if Normandy goes under? Says, "Our only choice is either splitting Normandy up into pieces and then exit to other school districts, or an exit in one piece to other school districts." That would be really disastrous for the Normandy community, and since they're our neighbor, I think it'd be really disastrous for us, too. And so my, my point is, is that finances is their big problem. I would like you, as a board, to revisit our tuition for transfer students. The state has requested that school boards approve a lower tuition rate. Eleven school districts in the county has done that. They're making it work financially, they're making it work with their community, and I think we should be able to make that work also. Obviously, there's a little hurry up to that because the school year starts pretty quickly. So if we're going to take on that task, we would, you would have to take that up pretty quickly. My basic operating is, Normandy breaking up or going away would be horrible. I don't see anything good coming out of that, and we should do everything we can to make sure that doesn't happen. So, I've got a letter with some more details I sent to the Post-Dispatch, and got copies for you there, and I would hope that you can meet and decide on a reduced tuition for transfer students, as 11 other districts have done. If you find in your heart that's impossible, I would like you to come back and publicly share with us what good does it do our community if Normandy goes away.
Hi, my name is Shontae Skellman. I was here on behalf of my son Larry Williams. I have been requesting a transfer for him for the upcoming year. We have been in Ferguson, Florson for the last 14 years, and my son is coming out of Berkeley Middle, going to McClure South. I have put in a transfer several times for him to go to McClure North due to him having problems with the children in our neighborhood that will be attending McClure South. I'm trying to keep my child out of trouble, and I want him to continue to stay in Ferguson, Florson. So I was just trying to see, why am I keep being denied when I'd like to stay in the
Well, we don't have that answer because we haven't discussed it with the administration yet. It hasn't come to our level. You can request a hearing with the board.
Okay. I spoke with several people in Ferguson, Florson, and they have just thrown me to the next person, to the next person, to the next person. So they have, they told me to come here and speak with the board.
You can request a hearing with the board.
Okay.
In writing.
I've done that already. My son's name is Larry Williams.
Thank you. Those are the only cards that had, were completed with names? Or just one more card doesn't have a name on it? Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Hearing none, let's take a 10-minute break. We'll meet at, let's say, 20 after, start up again. We can shake hands with our new administrators and any of the kids that are left. Thank you very much. Consent Agenda. Administration presents the following items for approval under the Consent Agenda. Ms. Hogshead, would you read the disbursements?
Payroll teacher and non-teacher, $1,000,89,032.22. Operational dispersal, $1,629,217.35. For a total of $3,518,349.57.
You can tell the teacher's got paid in May. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, any motion? Any motion? Any motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Been moved by Ms. Hogshead and seconded by Dr. Thurman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Curriculum instruction, math units of instruction. Mr. Vogel.
Over the past four years, the math grade level curriculum, Ryan Peetons, with the help of the math coordinator, have looked at the math. We are proud to bring the final product to the board for the student's curriculum.
I need a motion to accept the math unit?
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Thurman and seconded by Mrs. Hogshead. Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Vogel? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Mr. O'Neil.
McClure North High School, asbestos abatement. Let's see if this works. I hope it does. Of course, I got it up because my day works and this time come up tough. All right, I think this is fine. Good evening. The first item I have tonight is the McClure North asbestos abatement. This is related to, this is related to the boiler project. I had to do that windows, like the... Try that. It's related to the McClure North Boiler Project that's going underway this summer. What this basically is, is that we're required to have a third party do any kind of asbestos abatement and air quality monitoring, and it has, it cannot be done with the, with the bid of the contractor by state law and federal law. So what we did is went out to bid, as we normally do, and we received several bids for this item. There were seven contractors that received the bids, and six that submitted actual bids, and the lowest, most responsible bid was submitted by EnviroTech Incorporated, with their subcontract being SCI Environmental for the air service monitoring, and the amount of $22,767 for the total amount. What they will do is encapsulate the area, remove any asbestos-containing items, which is generally on the pipes, joints used, and sometimes on other, other parts of the piping, but it's mainly contained to that boiler room. So they, they'll contain that, envelope it, and remove it properly, and at the whole time, the air will be monitored inside and outside the room to assure that there's no fibers left anywhere in the building or in the area. So with, we checked both companies, very reputable in the area. I'm familiar personally with both companies, using them in the past in other careers, and both were checked backgrounds and came up positive. So with this information, we recommend the Board of Education award the contract to EnviroTech Incorporated in the total amount of $22,767.
Any motion to approve the asbestos statement, McClure North?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Brown, seconded by Dr. Thurman. Any questions for Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, Terry, when you say most responsible, what do you mean?
We, we don't have to always just pick the lowest bidder. They have to be the most responsible. In other words, we do a background check and make sure that the references are good, and we find the most responsible company rather than just the lowest bid.
And you did mention that residual fibers, whatever it is, will be cleaned out so obviously there should be no contamination. The kitchen, not coming anyhow.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't leave the boiler room at all to encapsulate it, and that's why the air quality testing is done during the removal, to assure nothing even gets out of that room, and it's contained in that area. It's, it's actually encapsulated, so they can't leave the, not even the full boiler room, just the area they're working in on those particular pipes and joints. Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? It's kind of quiet tonight, a lot of voices. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. O'Neil, MSD Disconnect Agreement, Mark Twain Student Support Center.
You may remember, last month, I came forward with the same exact, I actually just changed the name on it and used the same narrative. I won't put you through the whole thing, but it's once again MSD is requesting us to give them access to that and repair it at no charge, as long as we let them do it, to keep water from mingling for our down-south sump pumps and sewers. This is the same exact thing that was done, we mentioned at Duchenne last month. The exact same thing, we'll probably be seeing several of these throughout the year as they move forward to each area. Most likely, with the provision of the superintendent, it'll probably go to Consent Agenda after this, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware what was going on with these, so if you ever see them again in a packet, you know it's the exact same thing. It's no cost, won't disturb the school, doesn't disturb anything but the area they're repairing. And again, this one, again, is, I mean, it's the exact same item and all, so it's, it's a cap. So it's, involves a new piping cap and concrete work in a small area, and this one's at Mark Twain Student Support Center.
Any motion to accept the MSD Disconnect Agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Hogshead and seconded by Mr. Brown to accept the MSD Disconnect Agreement, Mark Twain Student Support Center. Any discussion, Mr. O'Neil?
I just got a question, have they started the work at Duchenne?
They have not. They will notify us in advance, and we have not received a notification at this time.
Any further? Hearing none, all... Opposed.
Thank you.
Operation, New Bus Route Report, Mr. Troxell.
I'm actually not Mr. Troxell.
No, you're not.
Officially, Mr. Troxell had a health-related thing that had to, he couldn't be here, so I'm filling in, so please be kind.
No, I got a lot of questions about you.
So this is, the board is asked to give initial approval to the 2014-15 bus routes, and as required by the state of Missouri. All bus routes have been designed and implemented by the district's transportation staff, and they've, you know, followed all the guidelines that they need to follow. Mr. Troxell had sent a mileage report that was included in your board packet, and it shows all of the different routes, and the ones that have HT by it are the homeless transportation routes. So where the administration is respectfully asking that the board give approval to the 14-15 bus routes.
I think we give approval to the 14-15 bus routes.
Second.
And moved by Mrs. Hogshead and seconded by Mr. Brown to accept the bus routes mileage report. Any questions for Mrs. Madruzyk?
Is it still within the mile?
Yes, the mileage is within, are the mileages, right. I also, Jim and I talked about the homeless transportation. They're trying to pick up as many students as they can during the regular routes, so if there's a student that might live a block over or something, they will swing by and pick up that homeless student on their route. So they're trying to incorporate as many students as they can on a regular routes.
I will say that Jim has done a great job in reducing the cost of the district running annual homeless transportation. It used to be in the, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we would spend.
He's cut it in more than half, yes.
Yes, it's, it's just amazing that...
He and Steve Leaks.
Finally got it under control. I appreciate that very much. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? Hearing our mileage report. All right, Mrs. Madruzyk, third-party Medicaid administrative claiming services. All right, Mrs. Madrusik, third-party Medicaid Administrative Claiming Services.
Okay. The Missouri Department of Social Services has always had this administrative claiming for Medicaid services. Excelify has always helped us with that claiming, and the state of Missouri actually had a bid, and Fairbanks won the bid and cut their services in half. So we don't have the services that we previously had with Excelify. It's a very huge task to do all the things that we need to do with the Medicaid reporting, and so we are respectfully... We put a bid out to see how much it would cost to administer the program. In the past, we've paid $15,000 a year to Excelify to do the service for us, and the bids came in, and the cost was $8,000. We're asking the board to consider entering into a contract with this third-party vendor to administer the SDAC program for us at a cost of $8,000 a year, which comes out of the Medicaid proceeds. This year, and they've really helped us with these Medicaid proceeds, this year we've received $511,000 of Medicaid, and so these proceeds... This would come out of those proceeds.
I move we accept hiring outside contractors.
Been moved by Ms. Hogseth and seconded by Dr. Thurman to accept the third-party medical administrative claiming services.
And we would like to award the contract to Innovative Options.
Innovative Options. Any discussion?
I know a few years ago, we kind of let it go down, and we weren't using it very much, and we talked last month about MSBA and NSBA, and at MSBA, I sat in the conference on how important it is and how much money that we can get, so I brought it back to Jeff, and brought it back to the district, and we really got busy with the Medicaid reimbursement again. So, one, going to those classes helps us.
Yes.
And, two, we really need to stay on the Medicaid...
Right. It's a large task. This third-party help has really helped us a lot, and so we would just like to... Now, this is different. Excelify and Innovative, both put in a bid. We ended up going with Innovative Options because they had more training. They both had $8,000, but they had more training.
But Terry, you said it was company before the positive team?
Yeah, Excelify, yes, and we got it to eight. That's what happens when you go out to bid. People will sharpen their pencils, so...
Great. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Oh, Mrs. Madrusik grew up again.
Well... And I'm going to ask Mr. O'Neil to step up with you.
This is the part I was talking about earlier. Capital bond, but...
We normally... We normally come earlier in the year, but because we weren't sure that we were going to have the funds, we had to hold off until we were for sure that we were going to get the funds, and thank you again to the public for allowing us to sell these bonds. So we are coming forward to the board for approval for the 15-16 bond budget for our projects. I'm going to give a little show here. So we had the successful referendum, and we're going to be selling $31 million worth of bonds, and it's going to be over a four-year period. The 15-16 school year will be the first year for the bond projects to begin. We are going to go for sale of bonds on June 24th, which we'll be talking about in a later agenda item. Our first sale will be approximately $8.7 million, and we're going to be using that for safety and security projects, and then also for our facility and technology improvements, the projects that we do throughout the years. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. O'Neil to give you more detailed, specific details.
For the... This is the... Talking about the bond budget for this coming year, we have some categories that we use every year, and this is also some of the examples that we use during the bond implementation projects, talking about our projects that we've been doing with the funds when we did our presentations for the Prop I. So as you can see, we have some categories that we use every year. We're going to use a little over $1.5 million for these types of things with furniture and grounds and lighting, vehicles, buses. I won't read them all to you, but those basic projects around the district. The infrastructure and building systems, we're going to spend a little over $2 million, which is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, which includes roofing and paving, flooring, some other security issues, safety issues, and our site improvements, and this is aside from the larger safety and security project. We always have money for our schools, for school educations. Miss Lane's project covers a long list of items that don't fall under infrastructure, and they involve projects that involve things like sound systems and doors and windows and lockers and ceiling and things to that effect. Also in that, we always try to put a little bit of money for emergency projects, because as you know, we try to plan the best we can, but there's always a few things that come up that we did not plan for. So we have about $50,000 for an emergency project for the coming year in that category. And then finally, what we were talking about, our safety and security upgrades in Phase One, which will be $3 million of the $7 million for this coming year. There'll be surveillance upgrades and additions, cameras and data storage at this time, and some entry enhancements such as air phone type systems to communicate with the office. Additional upgrades will be in the next year, which is more of the moving of the offices, the vestibules, and the visitor management system, which you remember is the system where you come in and swipe a license, and you're identified and get a tag, a visitor's pass. So between the two years, we're going to spend $8 million, three in this first year. So the total, again, for this coming physical year, is $7 million. Kind of give you an idea, and again, very draft. You see it's underlying and bolded because it's draft. The following year, 16-17, we're proposing, and I'm sure we'll adjust that before we bring it to you for approval, but roughly $9 million, five being for the, again, for the safety and security, and the rest being those projects and areas that we just spoke about. 17-18, same thing, $8 million for the steam project, the remaining, which is only $3 million, for those other projects in the district. In our final year, we don't have any of the two big projects, so it'll just be the $4 million for our normal ongoing maintenance and care of our properties.
So administration is seeking approval of the bond budget according to the capital improvement plan for the project scheduled for the 15-16 school year.
I move we approve the capital bond budget.
Second.
Been moved by Mrs. Hogseth and seconded by Mr. Brown to accept the capital bond budget for 2015-16. Any discussion?
Yeah. In terms of the surveillance, it's generally speaking as good as the camera in terms of quality.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I... You know, we see a lot of surveillance camera that have captured something, and you can't distinguish anything. It's awful. What are you doing in terms of making sure that we're getting a very good picture back if there is a difficulty or something, if you have to go looking for something?
Thank you. That's a good question, and right now, that's one of the things we're working on. Amoresco, who's done this at several different school districts, has a very clear idea of what cameras should and shouldn't be used in a school setting, and the best way to capture that. They're actually testing four different cameras in our district right now so that we can see the quality and the recording of it. We can watch it live or record and from many remote locations. So they haven't selected that camera yet, but they have four or five cameras they like and they use normally, and we have to look at that, make sure that we're okay with it. We're going to improve immensely what we have now. I joke that it's Bigfoot footage whenever I try to find something. No, you can... Put on the screen. This is much, much better, and I guess that we're doing testing first. We'll be able to select the best cameras that they can get for us. Basically, we have a price range. We've done a good job of giving this budget what it really needs.
Well, in terms of placement of cameras, I ask a question that is maybe too proprietary. Don't answer it. But in terms of placement of cameras and stuff, are our properties all going to be, say, canvassed pretty well?
Yes. As a matter of fact, we are going to be adding additional cameras, quite a few, and we're going to replace the ones that we have, move some that we have that don't feel in the proper location. So it will be much better, better coverage, better areas, much more coverage than we have now. Like I said, I don't want to talk too much about what we have now, but what we're going to have is going to be much, much better, more area covered.
I was talking to Tom Dunlap one day, and he said that improvements in the cameras, because that was kind of the question I had, are the cameras any better than they used to be, and he said that they have a dome camera at McLaurin North in the cafeteria that covers the whole cafeteria, and it's a pretty large area. He says they took a piece of paper, wrote a note on it, put it on a table, and they could read it. So that's pretty clear.
And this will improve on that.
I've got a quick question. I know in regards to... You all were stating not only where there was going to be cameras, but it was going to be changes in regards to where, like, the offices and stuff was going to be located?
Yeah.
Is that actually happening as well?
Yeah, that will be Phase Two.
That's Phase Two.
Because of the timing is the problem. They'll have to do that in the summer, when there's no students in the building. So obviously, this summer, it couldn't be done because of the timing of the bond issue. So yes, that's definitely still going to be done. If I went back in the slides, Phase Two, which will be the following year, is going to be offices and vestibules, and actually, they're going to try and start some of the things they can towards the end of this physical year.
And how are you determining which schools go first?
It's basically going to be... We're going to... On timing. Some of the schools, the way it's situated, we can do some work while there's actual students in the building, some of the work that can be done, and we'll start there so we can start early. So we're basically doing it based on the timing of it and what accessibility we have at different times of the year.
But not severity?
Well, I would say the problem is that every one's as severe as the other. The ones that we're doing are the worst. They're the ones where the office is nowhere near the front of the building. And so almost every one of those we identified is almost identical. So there's no worse, and that's why part of the thing, we're trying to get cameras in and the air phone system, the communication system in first, because that helps right away. So that's why that's kind of our first phase, rather than the vestibules and offices. We're trying to make it the best we can for everybody as quickly as possible, and then based on timeframes, trying to get these vestibules and offices situated.
Any further questions on the capital bond budget? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to do a cell bond, right? Oh, that is next.
It's a good segue. All right. On April 7th, the district received our approval for the sale that we have the ability to sell $31 million of bonds to fund several projects over the next four years. With me today, I have two representatives that are going to help us accomplish this task. Jason Terry is from Gilmoreville. He is our bond attorney. Come on up, Jason. And Lorenzo Boyd is with Stiefel Nicholas. He's our underwriter, and they're going to help us accomplish this task. We need to pass a resolution in order to be able to sell these bonds. We are going to sell $10 million... Well, it's not exactly $10 million. It's going to be $8.7 million of principal on June 24th, and they're going to be bank-qualified bonds, which is going to save us money in interest, and we need for the board to pass a resolution in order for us to be able to sell these bonds.
Need a motion to approve the bond sale resolution?
Move that we accept the bond sale resolution.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Thurman and seconded by Mr. Brown to... Any questions? That's pretty simple. Hearing none, all those in favor of bond sale resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. There you go.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Student accident insurance.
If you didn't have me tonight, you wouldn't have board meetings, that's all I'm going to say. Sorry. So students who are participating in athletic events need to have accident insurance either with or through their family, or the district also offers it. The district doesn't pay for the student insurance, but they just offer it for the students to be able to purchase it. We are offering insurance, the same insurance that we had in the past year. Our risk management services has this insurance called K&amp;K Insurance, and the rates did remain the same. It's $29 for school time coverage for PK through 12. If you wanted 24-hour coverage, it would be $105 a year, and for varsity football, grades 10 through 12, it's $171 for the year. This is not a district program, but it's just something that we offer for those that might not have insurance at home, and we're just asking for approval, for the board to approve that we can offer the student accident insurance to our students.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Hogseth and seconded by Mr. Brown to accept the student accident insurance for the next year. Any discussion?
I just have a question. If the students don't have insurance at home, is it required for them to purchase this?
Yes.
That was what I was going to ask.
If they want to play...
If they want to play...
Especially with the... Right.
Now, the second question is, how do we verify that they have insurance?
That would be a question for an athletic director. I don't know. I'm sorry. Anybody know that answer? But I will find that out for you.
I guess the question I have is that if we find that we have a student that got injured and there was no insurance, are we going to be liable?
I'm quite sure that there are... When they fill out their forms, they have to fill out their insurance information. I know that with my child, when I fill out the forms for her to participate, I have to put all the insurance information on there, so that's probably with the paperwork that they turn in, they have to provide that information. I'm just guessing.
I understand that, but I think hypothetically, if we have a problem where they say they have it or they do have it and they lose it.
Right.
And we have an injury, what happens?
That's... I will find that out and get back with you on that.
Certainly. Larry?
We'll look into that.
Here's just to make sure that it's available.
Right.
Right.
But we'll check with the athletic directors too and find out.
I just want to make sure.
How different.
When Aaron was at school, I think that we had to prove, we had to prove of insurance for her to play sports, probably to our two.
What I think is...
Yes.
What I think is, you know, people lose insurance as well. So how often do we go back to see if they still have it? But part of the responsibility is all the parents. Because I think one of the things that we say, as I recall as a principal, is you know that you have to have insurance yourself, or we will offer it to you, and if you choose not to accept our insurance, it's something... We have to prove that we sent this information to the parent, and that the parent is aware of it, and after that, from what I understood, because we've had kids who've broken their arms and powder bombs and things like that, and then the school district has not been liable for that, so the responsibility really is primarily on the parent.
So you're saying, Donna, then, if they do lose their insurance, family, and the child does get injured, what you're saying is it still falls back on the parent, doesn't it fall on us?
I will say from life's...
The experience, yeah.
We will find out for sure.
Okay.
Because I think athletics is different.
They have a test. When they sign up, they attest that they do have something in place.
And I understand.
We'll find out for sure, Mr. Brown.
Any further discussion on student accident insurance? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. There you go.
Thank you for that.
Wow. Mrs. Madrusik?
In May of 2012, the district went out for a bid for our banking services, and UMB was our bank that won the bid process, and we are just asking for the agreement is for renewal this year. I believe this is the last year for the renewal to be up, and we're just asking for the renewal of our bank agreement.
I move we renew our bank agreement.
Second.
Been moved by Mrs. Hogseth and seconded by Mr. Brown to accept the bank depository agreement with UMB. Any discussion?
Just for me? You can only bank with certain banks so many years in the world?
Yes. Yes, it's every three years.
Oh, really?
The state would like you. I don't think they would come down and put a sanction against you, but they want you to go out every three years. It just helps you make sure that you're doing your duty. Right. You don't have to change, right? You just have to go out for bid. And we use them for all of our services. We have a payroll account, a debt service account, a demand or a checking account. We use our P card through them too, so when we go out for bid, we'll go out for all those services.
Any further questions? Bank depository. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You get banked again. You're going to ask Swift and I can sign all those.
Thank you.[1762.35]
Exactly.
Budget hearing. Ms. Madrusi?
All right. This is a new year, and last year I came with a very sad story, and we went to the public, and because we had such declining balances, and we asked for money, and they gave us money. And so, this is a different budget presentation than last year. It's a much easier one to give. So I'm very happy to present the budget for the 2015-16 school year. So I'm going to kind of go over the 14-15 school year, where we're at and why we're there. This year, we anticipate that we're going to receive about $126.1 million of total revenue. 68 of it is, 68 million of it is through the local taxes, and then we get a little bit from the county. The state's going to come in at about 43.9. We'll get about $10 million of federal revenue, and then about $2 million. That $2 million is the tuition that we receive from the other school districts. So, revenue by source, our local revenue did increase by 3.6, more closer to $4 million due to the voter-approved tax levy. Some of our other revenue went down though, so local revenue's really only going to go up by 3.6. But most of that is due largely to the tax increase. County tax always usually just remains flat from the prior year. Our state revenue, the governor released some funds from the prior year, so we're going to receive about 770,000 additional funds from the 13-14 year in our foundation formula, which is a nice little boost. And federal funds should remain the same as they were the prior year. And then, the other revenue showed a decrease of one point, experienced a decrease of 1.6 million, and that was because we lost about half of our students. So we still received close to $2 million, but we did lose half of our students, so our revenue did go down. But they did pay the full tuition, and every time I sent a bill, they did pay it. So they were very timely and good on their payments. For our operating expenditures, we have, we anticipate that we're going to have a total operating expenditures of $123.4 million. As you can see, most of that goes towards instruction. The next largest would be for facilities, and then student services, and building administration, so forth. Our instruction expenditures remained flat. We had an ESA last year, and with all of the budget cuts, we were able to maintain our spending for this year. We did see in our support services, expenditures did drop. Facilities did a decrease of contracted services, and then with transportation's use of our own fleet for the homeless grant, our students, it saves us money there. And also, gasoline prices went down. So that saved us about $100,000 in gasoline prices. So that was a good thing. So at the beginning of the year, we started with $18.5 million. We should receive $126 million. We'll spend about $123 million, which gives us an ending balance of...
$21 million?
$21 million, I'm sorry. That's, I didn't even look at it. I was doing this late at night. But we should have an ending balance of about 17% if everything ends up coming in as we think it is. So looking at next year, we are going to, the local revenue, I believe, will remain flat. With our preliminary assessments, it came in from the county, it showed that residential assessments were down about 3.5%, but commercial was up like 3.32%. So that kind of washed itself out. So we should see flat revenue in our local taxes. We should see a little bit of an increase in our personal property tax revenue, because in Missouri, the sales tax is up about 3%, which means people are buying more, they're buying more cars and things, and so that we get property tax from that. So we should see a little bit more of an increase from that. We'll see an increase of about 3% of sales tax from this year, and that's close to $200,000 for us. Our county revenue, again, it just continues to remain flat, but that's okay, it's not going down. Our state revenue, the basic formula and classroom trust funds are predicted to see an increase of $1.3 million, and that is due to the formulas being fully funded this year. The state was able to rally around it and make cuts in other places, and so we will see, we should be fully funded this year, hopefully. Federal funding should remain flat from the prior year. And I dropped the revenue from the other school districts just because I, it's just kind of, I kept it in there this year, because I know that we're going to see it, but I went ahead and dropped it to a lower tuition rate, just because I don't know if they're going to have the funds to pay for it. So I just dropped it a little bit. On our expenditures, we reduced the staffing at the high school level by 3.3 positions through attrition because of the decrease in the enrollment. We did not do anything with the elementary staffing, although we did see a reduced enrollment. We're going to go ahead and keep five positions open, because at the beginning of the year, we see so much fluctuation with students. So we didn't want to have to come back to the board. We thought we would just keep those open. We can always cut those at a later date. I can come back and get a revision to cut those. But right now, we've got five open positions that we can, we can count on, or we can bank on. We had a turnover of about 73, at the time of this, there were 73 teacher positions that were, are being refilled, and 11 administrative positions. The teachers and the staff on our salary received a step increase on their salary schedules, and this was its average increase of about 2.53 for all employees. And so, it cost about $1.7 million for the support staff groups and the teachers. Our insurance, I built in a 5% increase to the insurance and to the budget. Basically, our insurance claims from last year to this year have gone up tremendously. Articulical costs continue to rise, and we've had some really major claims that we've had to pay this year. We've got some really sick people out there. So I do anticipate that it's probably going to go up about 5%. And I also added in expenditures for the Affordable Healthcare Act. We're going to add a part-time, part-time health insurance plan to our program, and so that's going to cost us a little bit more money too. And then also, we really have a high volume of workman's comp claims this year and liability claims. So I increased that liability insurance by 10% because our claims drive our costs. We are self-insured through that, but we have a lot of claims. And so, we're really going to work hard this year on trying to figure out how we can control those worker comp claims and make it safer in our buildings so that people don't fall and get hurt. So the overall operating expenditures are, we are going to have approximately $127.1 million of expenditures. Again, 69, close to $70 million for, that go to the instruction. 16 million will go to facilities, and then the rest is, you know, building administration, instructional support, transportation, food service. So as you can see, that big pie is, on that, that big blue pie right there is our instructional services, and then the 14% is facilities, and then the red, 10% is, I believe that's community, it was administration, actually. I can't, this is like a totally different color on here. Administration is green, I'm sorry, 10% is student services. 5% is transportation and food service, 1% for debt service, and 2% for our community service, and 2% for early ed. I can't, I need to get glasses. And then, I tried to break down the expenditures by object, or how we spend those money within those groups. So certified salary makes up the biggest amount, which is 43%. 16% of our pie goes to non-support staff salaries, 20% goes to benefits. So as you can see, this part of the pie shows that most of our expenditures go for salary and insurance. And then the rest is just for purchase services, materials and supplies, debt service, and equipment. So at the beginning of the year, we're hoping to start with $21.3 million. We should bring in 127 of revenue and spend 127. So we are going to have an ending balance of $21.4 million, hopefully. And that will take it to a percentage of spending is of a fund balance of 17, or close to 17%, which is a long cry from the 10% that we were at last year. So I'm very excited about that. So we anticipate a surplus of about $54,000 at the end of June 2016. We are not done with our work. We're going to continue to study programming, what can we do to help, you know, cut our expenditures. We're not going to sit back on our laurels. We're going to continue to look at things and see how we can be more effective, reduce our insurance costs, you know, so that we can go ahead and give salary increases and get the programming things that we need back in the classroom. I would like for the district fund balance to reach 20% so that we're very stable, and we need to continue to cut costs in order to get there. So, that's the end of our presentation.
I need a motion to accept the budget hearing?
Some of...
Moved by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Hogshead. Any questions on the budget?
I have one question, then I have a statement.
Okay.
The question you brought up, there was a 10% increase in, what was it, you called it disability?
The workman's comp liability insurance.
And you're looking at ways of reducing that. Do you have a task force or something?
We, actually, facilities has a new employee who has taken on being the safety person. So, we, and we actually do have somebody, a safety person in the facilities department that is supposed to go around and look at the curves, and look at the buildings, and make sure that things are, but we're going to start, we're going to form a safety committee.
Trying to anticipate.
Right, right.
Statement? Yeah. Well, I've sat through a few of these, and this one was a pleasure. And credit needs to be given to what credit is due. We did pass a tax increase in the bond, and we may have directed to have it done, but there were a couple of folk that really worked very diligently to do it, yourself and Jenna. And we have a debt of gratitude to both of you, because this would not have been done without you. And you are indeed, both of you, a credit and very valued employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my fifth time, a hearing is a budget hearing, and I remember the first one very vividly, and this one is much, much nicer to sit here and listen to, and really appreciate all the hard work and our effort that you've done to get those reserves back up instead of making them go down every year. And it's great to, really makes us a lot more stable, much easier to work with. So thank you very much for that. Any more comments? Hearing none? All those in favor accepting the budget hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
All right, we got one more.
Ms. Madrusi? Do you like to say something?
Yes, I would like to talk about food service now. The district is completing year three of a five-year contract with Airmark Food Services. And we have representatives here tonight from Airmark that is going to give a little presentation regarding our partnership and their accomplishments. And I will say that I am extremely proud of the staff at Airmark, of all the things that they've done this year, well, the last few years. They really went out, we've got a lot of grants going on right now, we've got a lot of really good things going on in the schools, and I'm very proud of the work that they've done. So they're going to kind of touch on some of their accomplishments, if you guys want to come up.
We're going to start with this, here, that's how we pulled together, just to give you a glimpse of what our year was like. It's been an awesome year, a trying year, but my staff, both my Airmark staff, but even more so the district staff, the district employees that work in schools, have really pulled together, really given themselves, both creating the work out, but also volunteering time and energy to help with some of the events that you'll see. And so, we're going to start by this, this presentation that I'm really proud of, because it really showcases the passion of everybody that works in the food service program here. So hopefully, as you can see, unfortunately, some of those pictures are a little dark, but our food service program, our nutrition services program, whatever names are changing across districts, whatever you want to call it, is more about feeding kids for us. It's about being a part of this community, caring about the people we serve. I'm passionate about it, you can tell, I'm choked up when I watch that. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what you expect to hear, a little bit about the food service program. I'm going to have Kelly come up and talk about some of the other programs that we've supplemented with and some of the other things that she's doing. This was the first year for us to participate in the community eligibility provision, which is the USDA program that's allowing us to feed all of our students at no cost. It was a very successful program. We were able to claim about 90% of our meals at the free rate, which made it financially feasible. The program is good for four years, so we signed up, locked in at that rate, but we can increase that rate, and we will actually next year increase to 92% claiming. So fortunate, unfortunate, that means that there is a need, severe need in our community, but we will have more revenue coming in from that program. We've served a little over 2.8 million meals this school, so that's a little over 16,350 meals a day. Slightly down from last year, I think we've contributed some of that to a lower involvement due to some of the normandy and urban kids going back and things like that. Overall, more meals because we did have a few more service days. Lunch participation was at about 73% at the year, breakfast participation 57%. Breakfast participation took a little bit of a hit because we lost a couple of our breakfast in the classroom programs. Two of the elementary schools did move away from the action and did see drops in participation at those. This was the first time that we had a USDA DESI audit under the new USDA guidelines, and I'm pleased to report that we passed that audit flying colors. There were a couple of minor findings that were easily addressed, and some additional training will need to do with administrators and staff throughout the district regarding the Smart Snacks initiatives and fundraising, which was all under the Food Service Audit. I think, other than that, briefly, we spent $2.7 million on food this year, 2.5 on labor, and $660,000 on cost. So we were right at that $6 million number that Laura mentioned, but we brought in a little over $6.5 million in revenue. So we did have a surplus of about $5 million this year, which is $100,000 above the guarantee of the district. So those surplus funds are used to support additional training. There's going to be much more training going into all of our staff next year due to USDA requirements, but also because we have the funds, we've done some special trainings, brought in some guest speakers that our staff really enjoy. Jeff Joyner does a lot of speaking for school nutrition programs. We brought him in last year, we're going to be able to bring him again to speak to all of our staff in August. So we also use that fund to increase food quality. Whenever we have the, whenever we're making money, we increase the amount we spend on food, so we can bring in more fresh produce and that nature. And then we also use it as a reserve to help out for when equipment goes down. So we do have funds to replace ovens and that nature. This year, we brought in, I put on the sheet I gave you, it said $280,000 in grant funds, actually closer to $340,000. We just got word today that one of the funds was $60,000 more than we thought it was. A large chunk of that is 200, about 20,000 of that is the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program that we do in half of our elementary schools. And then another big chunk of that is a new grant through St. Louis University, the holiday Kelly's speaking to, and then she can speak to some of our other programs.
Good evening, everyone. As Scott was just talking about, I know I brought it up at the last board meeting that I spoke at, but we received a grant through the Missouri Foundation for Health along with St. Louis University, which was valued at close to $80,000, which mean helping to stipend a couple of teachers, as well as pay for students to be employed through the district, and equipment and various things. So the program was called HELP, Healthy Eating with Local Produce. So in partnership with St. Louis University, we were able to turn McClure South Berkeley and McClure North into processing kitchens. So through the grant, we processed close to 3,000 pounds of sweet potatoes into sweet potato coins, I know, Dr. Duff, that's your favorite, and the other 5,000 pounds of tomatoes into marinara sauce to be used on our school menu. So the program really hired eight high school students, five at McClure North and three at McClure South Berkeley. So it instilled not only gainful employment while attending school, but also provided local foods for our entire district. So we produced enough marinara sauce and sweet potato coins to feed every student twice throughout the school year with local produce that was processed by the high school students. So they had professional training from SLU chefs that came in, gave them life skills of how to apply for a job. So these students actually had to go through the same process that our cafeteria staff have to go through. So interviews, they had to have resources, they had to do everything you'd have to do to have a real job. So that was a big learning process for them. So it was a really great program. Students learned a lot, at least they said they did, and that they really enjoyed it. So we're looking forward to continuing that program going into next school year. We actually had 10,000 pounds of tomatoes delivered today, thanks to our wonderful driver who helped me put it all in our freezer. But we've hired an additional three students to help process July into early June of August. So we're, again, looking forward, students made $10 an hour, and we're looking forward to bringing on those new students. The produce at the time, since it was purchased through the grant, was from a farm located about 45 minutes away, but we're hoping to partner more with Earth Dance Farms, which is right here in the community, as well as These Farms, which is within 20 minutes. So moving forward with the program, introducing more products, we're hoping to get really, really local by incorporating those two farms. So that was one. And then just to touch on a couple of pictures here that were in the video, we did have our first annual chops competition, although I don't think we're always the chops, so cooking competition, but all three high schools went head to head. Vax teachers, Family and Consumer Sciences teachers chose four students to form a team, and they competed against each other in a competition to see who could incorporate Earth Dance sweet potatoes into a winning recipe. McClure South Berkeley won and had a great winning recipe for sweet potatoes with black bean tacos, and we're looking forward to having the competition again in this upcoming spring. So put those high schoolers cooking to the test, so we're looking forward to doing that. And then finally, we've had some really fun success. I've done some nutrition education within the classrooms, so really getting kids excited about where their food's coming from, why it's important to eat it, and how we can stay physically active to really just be healthy for a lifetime. So I've had the opportunity to go in and do that, do some cooking classes along with Chef Tony, and then the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, which Scott touched on. So it allows students to sample fruits and vegetables outside of the school on service programs.
One of the other things I'm really proud of this year is our, and in the past several years, actually, is our community support. This year, we, you saw some pictures of some kids receiving shoes. This is the third year for our Samaritan's Feed Event, where we provide 200 shoes to students in the, we had about 50 or so show up to the day of the event where we provide the shoes. And then through the help of Tony Burrows with PACT and also our homeless liaisons and some other programs, we were able to distribute those rest of the shoes to students in the, we were also very honored to be able to support the Summer Walk through donations, some scholarship programs. And then one of the things that I was really proud of that we got to do was, we had some rough times at the beginning of the year, and we were able to serve about 4,000 kids on those days when school was closed. And we were able to do that because of the generosity of our staff, willing to volunteer their time to come and do that. I want to recognize a couple of staff members that are here. And whether they participated in that day or not, these two ladies have happened to come to every single board meeting, have given their lives to this district and are always helping us out, and we're really grateful for that. So I want to recognize, I'm going to coin a passion that's right here.
So with that being said, that's all of the accomplishments. Like I said, I'm very proud of them and very proud of our staff. We did have a tough year this year. I was very proud, they came and volunteered their time to help prepare food. I was with them in the McClure kitchen, packing lunches that we could take out to the community during those unrest days when we were off school. So we were able to feed students while we were not even in school, and thankfully to our staff that came in and volunteered their time to do that, and we're very appreciative of it. So administration is seeking approval of continuing the contract for the next school year, for the '15-'16 school year, for the contract with Airmark, sorry.
Any motion to accept the food service program?
So moved.
Update any contract or no?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Brown, seconded by Dr. Thurman. Any questions?
Yes, I do, I have a question. You gave a very good report, and things are looking up, and we all agree with that. But you said something very, very troubling, and I want to know what your thinking is on this. You mentioned that breakfast had dropped to 57%?
Yeah, there's...
No, two schools.
Two schools?
There were two, well, but the overall percentage was 57%. We were probably around 60%. In general, secondary schools lower breakfast participation because they tend not to eat breakfast.
Okay.
But there were two schools that dropped the breakfast in the classroom program for either logistical reasons or, there's certain situations. I know, for example, Central is one of those. That building is not conducive to carrying all the food, so we have to find another solution to get kids, either to the cafeteria or get food to the kids who may come in.
And that's where I was going, because as best I can gather, an empty stomach is a child that doesn't want to learn. And if we're having that type of difficulty and we can identify it, then it does seem to me that we must do something about it for those children's sake. So I don't know if that falls on your shoulder or however it works, but it is something certainly that we do need to identify and see that we can solve it. A very good report, but those are areas that we can do something about.
And we're certainly working on things, especially for those schools, but also for some of the grant funds that we've raised, are to explore opportunities for mobile feeding sites at the secondary schools to know where the students are instead of asking them to come to us, to try and help feed them in the secondary, because the secondaries are really one of the areas where the participation really suffers for breakfast.
And that's something we really have to do.
Yeah.
So we've got $8,000 to start a drive and go breakfast program, so I'm looking forward to that. So it's actually a mobile food cart that is supplied through Midwest Dairy Council. So it'll have low-fat and fat-free milk, cheese, and yogurt available along with whole grains and a variety of things outside of the cafeteria. So we're looking forward to the secondaries to hit a different spot.
The first one of those was put into place second semester at McCord North. We put it up by the library, and it had some success there, but need a little bit of thought.
You know, and that was one of the questions that I had too. When you said two schools opted out, I thought you meant they decided not to do it, and I wanted to know, do we allow them not to? But you answered my question.
We did. When we first, when I first took over, we made them do it, and there was a lot, a lot of pushback and a lot of, the teachers, it's one more thing for them to have to do, and times were so troubling this last couple of years, we just didn't want to make them to have to do one more thing. So we just said, if you continue to do it, we really appreciate it, but we didn't make them do it this year, so two schools did drop out.
To the credit of all the teachers and schools, I expected half of them to drop out.
Right, right.
So the fact that only two did, I think that speaks to the success of the program and the willingness and the understanding of the teachers' power in feeding the kids, so.
And I want to acknowledge too, I only thought that you brought food in to feed children, and that was it. So to hear all of the different things that you're doing and all the monies that you are getting and the grants and things like that, it makes me really proud to be a part of this district and to know what you guys are doing. And we all know, and I think you said it best, we've got to feed our kids in order to have their brains working and so that they can learn. So here's just another example of how the district works together, you know, not just from in the classroom, but in the cafeteria and all over, just to do something good for our kids. And so I want to say thank you for the extra work that you do and all the things you brought to the district, so we really appreciate that.
On the breakfast for the secondary level, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay.
It was just a real quick question. How was the summer meals program going?
I actually don't have a whole lot of number on that, but it's, we have quite a few sites open, and I think participation's been fairly high, but I have not seen the first round of sales on the tournament yet. And certainly get those to you as soon as they, we'll get those tomorrow, actually.
I was just wondering.
We don't typically see a lot of, we open up the sites for kids in the queue to come in, not just kids in the program, and to my knowledge, we have not seen a lot of traffic that way. We typically don't see a lot of kids come on and off the streets.
And there's no cost for that, right? They just come and get...
It's entirely free for anybody under 18.
And they can go to any four of the sites, so it doesn't have to be their home school. Like I had a mom calling, her son goes to McClure North, but it's way easier for them to get to McClure for breakfast, and as long as they're 18 and under and in the number of the district, they're able to go to those sites. So he was able to go to the easier school to get that breakfast.
And Dr. Diggs has also been working with Priscilla in the food service department to have food trucks to come to Berkeley, one of the parks in Berkeley behind Berkeley City Hall, and then there's also a park up from Bermuda, that we're asking for some Operation Food Search, I believe it is, is going to...
So she's kind of bringing the truck and working with the staff to...
Right.
Are you, are you all doing anything with the Boys and Girls Club at Burke Hill?
They're providing their own.
Right. We offered, to our program, and probably in the school year, we will suggest that they use our program, that they did have their own that they wanted to use for right now, so.
And I understood correctly that you meant the surplus for the contract?
I exceeded the surplus, I...
Great, great. Any further discussion? For those who don't know what the surplus is, it's the amount that the district, money comes back to the district for food service. So this year, it's a half a million dollars around. Very good, great. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the food service program update and contract renewal? Say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And you're done.
Locations of 2015-16 board meetings. Three years ago, I started having board meetings at different locations throughout the district, just A, so that the board could get into different buildings, B, so the community might feel more comfortable coming to a board meeting and talking with us, and I had a lot of positive response. I know Ms. Fredericks, the first time that she came, she came to vote when we were there, and that was her first trip into the school board meetings, and so moving, I made her come, and she's been coming ever since. So I talked with Larry about the different meetings, and I don't have the, there it is, I do have the schedule. In September, we'll be meeting at Central Elementary. In October, we'll be meeting at Holman, and in May, we'll be meeting at McClure North, but not in the gym. So definitely not in the gym. So we'll probably be meeting in a little theater there, which is a lot more conducive to a board meeting. Anyhow, that is the planned schedule, and again, the May meeting will also be the Mark Twenty Book Awards, and we'll have that at McClure North this time. Any motion to accept the locations for 2015-16 school board meetings?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Brown, seconded by Dr. Thurman. Any discussion, any questions?
Can we relook at how the board members get their information for that meeting? I just noticed when we did the meeting at McClure South Berkeley, nobody touched their binders, and we wasted a whole lot of paper. So I think we need to revisit in regards to an economical way for us to have our information.
We don't, we don't use the, we had that discussion. We used to have the computers like we do here and logistical setup and making that happen in the schools. We felt it was, A, it was more difficult for staff, B, it was at least as expensive paying the technicians to come and get it all set up as it was to print the books. The books seemed to be an easier way. We just want to make sure that you have all the information if you have questions about a particular issue that evening, so the books is...
I think maybe what she's saying is we all just use the agenda like we do here, so that we could do that, and then we would have the information come to us before on the computer. If we wanted to print something out, we could do so and bring it ourselves instead of spending all the time and money.
If you want to do that, that's fine, it's just...
Yeah, I just want to blow it up.
If that's an option that the board's willing to accept, I think that there would be people...
So how do we go about doing that?
We just hit.
Good. So we don't have, you were here at...
We probably try it for the first one and see how that works, and if we need to adjust it, you know, we...
And I'll send an email to everybody on the board prior to that, reminding them that if there's particular items that they want more information on than just the agenda to bring with them. How's that?
That's good.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Graves. Does anybody get a motion? All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign? Motion carries. I'll see you in Central in September. Our oldest school in the district, the oldest continuous school west of Mississippi, I believe.
Where are you going to be?
It's been a school for 135 years and still a school today.
It's too early to, to ski.
Any motion to adjourn to executive session? It moved by Dr. Thurman, and seconded by Mrs. Hawke, it moved to executive session. Ms. Hawke, head to the hall. Thank you very much for coming tonight.